West Bridgewater Public Schools Public Hearing on School Choice. In accordance with the Mass General Law Chapter 76, Section 12B, each year we must have a public hearing on school choice. This is an opportunity for the public to express their views on school choice to the committee. At this hearing, the responsibility of the committee members is to listen and not to express our views, debate, or make decisions. Are there any public members here who would like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing on school choice and proceed to open our regular meeting of the January 8th, 2024 West Bridgewater School Committee. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
A moment of silence. The listing of matters on tonight's agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and is being livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be made available on the wb-cam.org website. And first up is one of my favorite things, recognizing some of our awesome students. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing the winners of the VFW Patriot Pen Essay Contest and the Voice of Democracy Contest. This is Yanis.
While there is a place in VFW Voice of Democracy Contest, the Voice of Democracy Scholarship Program offers interest with students in grades nine and twelve, an opportunity to compete for scholarships and incentives. Students compete by writing and recording a three- to five-minute audio essay on an annual patriotic theme, and this year's theme was "What are the Greatest Attributes of a Democratic Student?"
Not letting you get away. Should be proud of yourselves.
Congratulations, Anthony. Nice job. Thank you for representing West Bridgewater so well.
Thank you. And of course, you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but if you would like to go, we can pause for a few minutes and let you go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Twenty-four School Committee Meeting, and I'd like to introduce Ms. Reese Bonker to the committee. Reese, thank you for being our student rep tonight. And we're going to hold off on approving the minutes from our December 4th meeting as they're not quite done yet, so we're going to table those till next month. And so we can move right into the superintendent's update.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Hume. So first updates on the MSBA, just to let everyone know where we stand in terms of the building project. We were part of the December 13th Board Meeting at the MSBA. We attended virtually the Board Directors' Meeting, where West Bridgewater was voted unanimously into the feasibility phase, so we're very excited about that, to move forward officially into the next phase of the project. Then soon thereafter, on December 18th, we completed a Module Two orientation, which is procuring, the training is procuring, an ONUS Project Manager or an OPM and Designer. So we had an afternoon of that. We fortunately have already formed an OPM Designer Selection Committee, which is good, a little step ahead of where we should have been, so we did that prior to at our last meeting. Tomorrow night, we actually have a subcommittee meeting, where we will go over the RFS, which is a Request for Services, which is the next deliverable that we need to have done, which needs to be done by January 18th. And then we will have our full meeting on January 23rd of the School Building Committee. So at that time, we'll be able to update the entire committee on where we stand, we'll have the RFS into the MSBA for their review, and hopefully it'll be posted by them.
So does the state review and post it without any feedback to you?
They will provide feedback, we'll review it. What has to happen is we will make sure it works on our end, make sure we're not missing any information, it'll go to them, they will also review it. If we have to make any final edits, we will. And then we'll go through the rest of the process for the hiring of the OPM. So on the board, you'll see, I know it's a lot of small lettering, but it's kind of the process we need to follow. With drafting and approving the RFS, we'll need to place an advertisement in a variety of different locations for two weeks. We'll receive, I'm assuming, numerous applications for the OPM position and from the different firms. We will then select a short list of OPM firms to be interviewed, we'll complete reference checks, we'll select the highest-ranking firm after our interviews are completed, we'll negotiate with the selected firm, provide information back to the MSBA in terms of our selection, and then the goal really is to attend the April 8th OPM Panel, where they'll become officially approved. So from what we're doing now until April 8th, we've got a lot of work to do in between with a lot of timelines that are set by the MSBA, but also we're going to work with, because we really hope to get to that. If we don't make all the deadlines, there is a meeting in May, but that's the, April 8th is the first one they scheduled. And like moving forward in feasibility, we want to continue on a faster track as possible to move through this process while completing all required documents. And then we'll sign a contract with the OPM. Any questions?
So when you place the advertisement, and then you mentioned that you have a two-week period?
I believe it's posted for two weeks. Next up is the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan and Budget. So for the past three years, we've created a Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for the district. A lot of different parties have collaborated on this, myself, our business manager, our administrative team, Director of Maintenance, Director of Technology, and obviously sharing this information with the school committee. We do meet with the Town Capital Committee, usually in March. Over the past three years, for capital budget items, we've received items such as last year, the elementary touch panels, the year before, the Roseell McDonald Generator, Middle Senior High School Boiler, and some HVAC controls, and three years ago was a school maintenance vehicle. We are part or department of the town, but over the past three years, we've asked between 5% and 10% of the capital budget items. So I think we're still very much on the low end of asking things that we really need that aren't, we aren't able to put into our school budget. And this plan is dependent on what are the greatest needs within the district at that time. Certainly, some things may come up. What we have listed now could be moved to different years, depending on priorities, if they change. Some of the items that we're considering for this year, doesn't mean we're going to move forward with all of these, but our elementary teacher Chromebooks are, on average, about eight years old, they're laptops. We think we're able to replace them with very high-functioning Chromebooks, and to get a number of years out of them. A lot of the things we do are on the cloud, so I think having a high-functioning Chromebook would be sufficient and work well. Our middle, senior, high school computer lab is about eight years old, nine years old, so some of those desktops do need replacing. Our copiers here are also from the building, they're original, so we're not sure if we need, I think we have seven copiers within the building, so they're a little bit different cost for each one, so we're exploring what the cost may be to buy outright or to continue leasing. And we've had this on before, but looking at the possibility of a transportation vehicle for athletics and extracurricular activities. If we're sending small teams or small groups of kids places, usually, you know, the only alternative option is a bus. We're paying the market rate for that. If, a lot of districts do have school vans, where coaches will transport, we know there's a lot that needs to go into that in terms of making sure they've trained, making sure we have all the insurance we need, but I think it's a cost savings down the road to get a vehicle. And, you know, we've got, you know, maybe a few kids going out to Western Mass for a cross-country meet, you know, we're getting a bus. Kids in winter track may go into the Reggie Lewis Center or the New Balance Center in Boston, and we're getting a full bus for a small number of kids. We may have a group of kids want to go to the Museum of Fine Arts, and if that's, they could do that during the school day, they could take that vehicle, and they don't have to pay the cost of taking a bus. So there's a lot of benefits to having a school van.
Last year, we had made the request for the van, and we weren't able to procure one. Is this an additional money to procure more vehicles, or like, are we looking for two? Or is this an increase so that the money that was attributed for a van last year could actually potentially purchase something more realistic? You couldn't find anything used that was available for it?
Right, so we appropriated up to $30,000 for a special education van. We weren't able to find one, the source we had, we thought we could get one, we weren't able to secure one, so this would be separate from that. Just because of the timing of the runs, not really the morning runs, but the afternoon runs, if we had a special education van that could travel, you know, to drop-offs in the afternoon, again, that would be a big cost saving, so it's trying to find the right vehicle, so we could take some of those runs away from other contractors and bring them in-house. So it would be an additional vehicle.
Okay, so we're looking for transportation for athletics and extracurriculars, and also for special education?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, these are some of the things we're proposing, not set in stone, but some of the things that we feel will be most cost-effective in the future. And many of the items on there are from Howard, Roseell, and Spring Street, some of the later years, and obviously if we move forward with a building project, some of those things would not be necessary to carry over. But we also know that, you know, we need to prioritize what we can, but things come up. Boilers, our electrical systems, older buildings, you may have more issues, so we hope to continue with what we have and not have any major maintenance costs.
The more quickly our school building project proceeds, less important some of those long-term goals might be.
Correct. We can push off generators and electrical panels unless there's a, you know, a safety need for them. And just a quick update on the budget process. So our administrative team is working right now to build the FY25 budget. Mrs. Grant and the principals have submitted information. Mrs. Grant is looking at all contractual obligations for staff, including salary step and track increases. We're looking at our school contributions, looking at grants. We know ESER is running its course, so we're looking at what kind of gap or cliff there may be from using ESER for staff funding. We also have other grants that we, that may or may not continue, the Behavioral Health Grant that we have for our school adjustment counselors, we're unsure if that will continue for next year. And another big part of our school contributions is school choice, so we're going to need to look at the number, if approved, the number of school choice students we accept this year. I anticipate fewer openings, especially at the elementary level, if it is opened. We continue to review our staffing needs within the district, where we need additional staff due to the needs of our students. These aren't wants, again, these are needs for our district. Special education out of district placements continue to go up, so again, we try to our best to keep as many students in district as possible, to give them the best education here in West Bridgewater, but depending on their needs, they may need to go out of district. And we will give the formal budget presentation to the school committee on March 4th, the following week, you'll vote on that, and then we'll go to the town after that. We do have a meeting scheduled with members of the town next week, I think the 17th, to kind of share our budget ideas, budget concerns with them. I felt when we met in October, it went very well, very collaborative, they asked some great questions, and it was great to just all sit in the same room and share information.
So with something like the behavioral grant in not knowing, being kind of variable, are you baking in that kind of position?
That's.
To move to next year, just in case, or?
We're going to look at that. I think there's going to be a need, we're going to look at how effective it has been, and I'm imagining it's going to be very effective, but it's been a short amount of time, we've had the staff in place. I think it's our goal to continue that, because we've expressed that as a need prior to the grant.
Right.
So I think it's a need for us, whether it's paid for out of a grant, or we put it into our budget. All right, that's all I have.
All right. Next up is our student representative update. Reese?
The Middle Senior High School will join together at our school to compete in the annual honors group. We hope to come out with a victory. In December, we held our second Wildcat Pride breakfast. Students were recognized by teachers and staff for standing out and good citizenship and embodying our school values of Wildcat Pride. Our second breakfast will be in April. The drama presentation of Matilda Jr. was performed last month. Students worked hard and put on an amazing performance for our community. We look forward to the production of Annie this spring. The Grade Seven National History Day will be held on January 10th. Students have been working hard to prepare for their presentations. They'll present their projects to judges on the half-day at 11:00 a.m. The Howard School celebrated last week, the last week of December with a fourth and fifth grade dance. Students danced all night and had a great time. Thank you to the volunteers. The Howard School had Spirit Week the week before vacation. Students had a great time participating in each theme, as well as the door decorating contest. Congrats to Ms. Duffy's Room for winning the contest. On January 11th, Grade Five and Six students will be participating in a social media safety presentation funded by the PTO. This is the second year in a row that the Howard students will be participating in this event. The Howard students are taking their MOI tests of the following weeks. Once complete, an updated report on student progress will be sent home. The halls of Roseell McDonald were full of festive cheer. Thank you to all the parents who volunteered in their child's classrooms with special games, crafts, and holiday activities. Our third graders were presented dictionaries from the Rotary Club of Bridgewater's in December. Each classroom wrote a shared essay on how they can help others and be kind in each classroom, had volunteers share their essays. The Rotary Club also presented each teacher with a literacy game to use in their classrooms. December was a busy and festive month at the Spring Street School. Mr. Bodwell came with, came to the preschool and read a book, Dream Snow by Eric Carl, to the students. Everyone received a snowflake to take home and participated in a fun science activity. Kindergarten celebrated Polar Express Day by visiting the Middle Senior High School, and had a very special reading of the story also by Mr. Bodwell. When they returned to their school, they were surprised with a special Christmas gift. Thank you to Dr. Oakley for starting these fabulous traditions.
I was fortunate enough to be at the Wildcat Pride breakfast. It was awesome. Congratulations.
So recognized, and I want to thank all the staff. They did a nice little video tribute for each student that was recognized, and the, you know, family members there, and I thought it was a very nice addition, and I look forward to the one this spring. It's always great to recognize, we have so many great kids who do so many great things. You know, sometimes they're recognized, and sometimes they're just doing great things, and they're seen within the school, so I think it's just another way to highlight, you know, the kids doing the right thing at the right time.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Under Business, 2024-25 School Choice, which is a voting issue. As noted under Mass General Law, Section 12, all districts are school choice unless they vote no to being a school choice district. So that being said, the only need to vote on this, if there is a motion to withdraw our participation in the state school choice plan for the 2024-2025 school year. Is there a motion to change our status from school choice district to a non-school choice district for the 2024-25 school year?
That's why I have a concern. I, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but I just, you know, I sit in these meetings and meet with everyone and listen to how we're at capacity, and, you know, and I, you know, I'm thinking, you know, based on what we've discussed, and then I think of all the building that's still happening in town, and homes that need to be filled, and, you know, I think that's, that's been my, is my concern right now, is, you know, the unknown, and I, you know, I want to do what's best for our students that we have now, not that anybody doesn't, but, you know, I reached out to Mr. Bodwell this morning and mentioned that, you know, I did have some concerns with our capacity and continuing to move forward with this. And you came back and you mentioned that, you know, there could be some, you know, in ninth grade, we have an opportunity to fill as we lose kids to southeastern or other districts or other schools, so.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Carrie in that I just feel like we're growing so fast, we're at capacity, reaching capacity. Of course, I also know that our budget really relies on it, and so, you know, I'm, and just in general, what school choice is all about, I'm a proponent of, I just, I want to make sure that we're moving forward very cautiously.
Yeah, I think we've historically done a good job of not, you know, watching the numbers closely and just filling in when we can, and like Mrs. Dragon Knight said, it's such a good boost for our budget, so it's something I think we just need to continue to watch and see where it takes us.
Yeah, I think the number of school choice students that we accepted this year, new to the district, shows good restraint, that Mr. Bodwell made sure that we accepted them only where we do have room, that ninth grade and high school have some space where we could accept school choice students. And in classes, which are bubble classes that are now becoming the new normal, we really can't fit more. So I think it shows that Mr. Bodwell's keeping an eye on that, and I applaud you for that. I, you know, we don't want to overcrowd the kids, but we do have a lot of building, and there are going to be people moving into town, and we're not sure how many are coming, how many kids.
What grade they're going to go into.
Yeah, it's just the unknown is so.
But, I mean, how many, I mean, you think, to argue, how many families are going to move in with kids that are, you know, that, you know, could, that are, that could be in those levels? I don't know. It could be younger, it could be non.
We could continue adding to that, and that's really out of our hands. The construction's going on, and people are going to buy those homes.
Yep.
And I, thank you, and I think my feeling is, we have been cautious, we'll, you know, continue to be very cautious. There are some grades that we know will be closed right away, some we may consider siblings, because they do get preference by the law, and some will be open, like our eighth going into ninth for sure, but I think we have to, and we've always said, we can do five, but, you know, five classes per grade, but we can't do six. We physically don't have the classroom space, so we have to be very careful. It does, you know, you balance the budget with the class size and the experience for our kids, and I've always said, I would never, you know, increase class size just to supplement the budget. That's not good for anyone in the district, not good for our kids, not good for our families, and certainly not good for our staff, so we need to be cautious. And, you know, we decide on which grades are open, and, you know, we can have that, you know, discussion, we can talk about it individually at meetings, but I think we'll, if open, we'll maintain the consistency of being cautious.
Anything else? All right, so seeing we don't have a formal motion to change our status, we will remain a school choice district and move on to the next item under Business, Inclusion Matters Update. Mr. Shemir?
Yes. So Mission of Inclusion Matters, as West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s, and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system, and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. In December, we held our annual Rock Your Socks fundraiser in celebration of International Day of People with Disabilities. The event was very successful, raising $1,754 from students in grades K through 12. Big thank you to one of our board advisors, Nikki Maloney, for coordinating and handling the logistics of this fundraising event. We could not have done it without her. Inclusion Matters is excited to welcome our four new student representatives, Alexis Amarillo, Riley De Silva, Viviana Morales Wakin, and Ella Holden. We're looking forward to gaining valuable perspectives from our student body, as well as working with these young members to work toward building more inclusive opportunities within our schools. In the words of Liz Fosline, "Diversity is having a seat at the table. Inclusion is having a voice. Belonging is having that voice be heard." For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA, or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Great, thank you. Next up, Policies.
All right, move to open the following policies for review at our next meeting. BHE, Use of Electronic Messaging by School Committee Members. EHAA, District Security Relating to Technology. EHB, Data and Records Retention. GBEE, Personnel Use of Technology. IJIND, Access to Digital Resources. IJINDB, Empowered Digital Use Policy. IJINDC, Internet Publication. JICJ, Student Use of Technology in School. JLCE, Automated External Defibrillator AED Policy and Procedure. KDC, Community Use of Digital Resources. KDCB, District Website and Social Media. EFC, Universal Free School Meals. And EFD, School Nutrition Program Charge Policy. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, or discussion?
I'll make it just note that a lot of those policies are new, so there's a whole bunch of new technology policies that the MASCE posted in December, so we're trying to grab them as we can and just review them right away.
Keep us up to date.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So approval of the policies that we have open. Move to adopt the following policies. ADF, School District Wellness Program. JBB, Educational Equity. JH, Student Absences and Excuses. JHD, Exclusions and Exemptions from School Attendance. JI, Student Rights and Responsibilities. JIE, Pregnant Students. JII, Student Complaints and Grievances. JJ, Co-curricular and Extracurricular Activities. JJIB, Interscholastic Athletics. JJIF, Athletic Concussion Policy. JJIF-R, Athletic Concussion Regulations. And JK, Student Conduct. Is there a second? All right, discussion.
All right, so new to our index are JJ, Co-curricular and Extracurricular Activities, JII, Student Complaints and Grievances, and JBB. So those are, those are net new to move to our index. JK, JJIB, and JI, there were no edits, we just added the sourcing. So for changes to actual content, JH, Student Absences and Excuses, we did have some minor changes. We deleted a sentence regarding the schoolwork, we also added legal references, and there was a DESI note that was included with the, with the policy, with, with items for policies and protocols that are located in our handbook. So basically, it was a note, and everything that was in there was, is already included in one of our, you know, corresponding school handbooks. JHD, we had exclusions and exemptions from school attendance, there were very small, minor edits with updated. There were very small, minor edits with updated legal references for 2023. And then policy J I E, pregnant students. The policy was revised as M A S C took out much of the language that was surrounding the day-to-day when students return from a pregnancy leave. Overall, the content was exactly the same, like the intent was the same. It was just, they just took out a lot of like the fluffy language that had been and made it more concise. So then we had the policies that had major changes to content. J J I F, athletic concussion policy. First, first off, the title had changed. You'll see in the, in the Word document, the title had changed. And then in addition, the prior policy was more of a protocol document. And what we're recommending is that the district take the prior protocol verbiage and attach it with the old, so there was forms for J J I F, which were, there's like three forms, and take that verbiage from the prior protocol document and package it together with those forms and then post it on the district website, which was similar to what we did with the bullying plan.
Yep, so we revamped the bullying policy and took all of the same language and made it a protocol document. So essentially the same thing with the concussion.
Yep. And then J J I F dash R, athletic concussion regulations. There was just some pronoun changes and minor formatting. There was really nothing there. And then that brings us to A D F, the school district wellness program, which we all know we've, we've been talking about over the past few months, substantial edits and changes to the policy. The revised policy is really, I don't know, I think it's great because it's inclusive of everyone's feedback. And there was discussions with the, with the well, the new wellness committee and the school committee and, and Mr. Bodwell. I, I think it was true testament to getting something done together, so.
Yep. And we did update those priorities from the feedback in our discussion at the last meeting, as well as some feedback from the wellness committee. Thank you. One of the things that the wellness committee would like, wanted to have included is, under the environmentally friendly practices, including composting and recycling, which I think is perfectly valuable. So that policy is in your folder. Is there any, any question about any of the policies, discussion on anything?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good. Put that one to that. All right, move to rescind the following. J J I F dash Form 1, pre-participation head injury concussion reporting form. J J I F Form 2, report of head injury during sports season form. And J J I F Form 3, post-sports-related head injury medical clearance and authorization form. As school committee policies, and refer these documents to administration for review and inclusion with the district athletic concussion policy and protocol plan. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
So this is, these are the three forms that I just referenced up above. They were part of the, the prior policy package and we're looking to just rescind them as actual policies because they're not policies on the M A S C and then have them be part of the overall plan.
Any other discussion?
No.
No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And move to not adopt the following policies that we had opened to review. J C, attendance areas, and J C A, assignment of students to schools. Is there a second? All right, discussion?
Yep, so J C and J C A go hand in hand. Neither were on our policy index. However, when we reviewed them, we quickly understood why, which was because they were not applicable to our school district. So their overall premise is establishing attendance areas within a school system. So for example, you have a city with multiple elementary schools and it was more about geographic locations and the assignment of students to particular schools. And they're not applicable to us.
We're not building那么多 houses.
No.
Not yet. Well, I will put an asterisk next to them to berro.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think Carrie has a slide for us.
Yeah, so we wanted to start the year upright and just give everyone an update as to where we are with our policy index review. So we are currently at 59.3% of our way through. We're changing the way that we track our reporting. So we were going election year to election year, April to April. But what we've decided to do is look at it, you know, as a, as a regular unit of the year. So we're, our goal this year is to get through the remaining 41%.
41%.
Yeah. I'm hoping that next month, we'll have a good chunk with 13. The problem is that this is a bit of a moving target as well because, as we mentioned when we were looking at those technology policies to adopt, to look at for the, for next month, you know, there's a ton that just kind of just all of a sudden come in. So we're constantly, as you know, Donna, you've done this, constantly.
Whack-a-mole.
Yeah, we're on the, we're on the little hamster wheel going around in circles, trying to get off, so.
Great, well, we appreciate your, all your work on, on the policies. So next up is warrants.
Yes, the following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2024. Bill warrants, December 7th, 2023, $264,593.73. December 14th, 2023, $175,443.61. December 21st, 2023, for $216,854.32. And there was no warrant on December 28th, 2023. The following two payroll warrants, December 8th, 2023, for $659,846.86. And December 22nd, 2023, for $580,658.33. As always, all warrants are public record and once signed are available in the selectman's office for review.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes and are reminding that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Have anyone? All right, seeing none.
Actually, can I have a quick comment?
Of course.
I just wanna, we had our first snow event yesterday and I just want to thank our school maintenance staff and our, you know, local DPW. A lot of people commented they got into West Bridgewater and it seemed a lot better than maybe than from the communities they were traveling in. And same around the schools. They work very hard, they always have, and done a nice job in and around the schools. I even saw them doing sidewalks this morning and everywhere. So it's comforting to know, you know, we're always on the phone or texting, you know, throughout the night and early morning, but they're, they're always working hard to get the job done. So I just want to put a general thank you to all of them. And we have another weather event, you know, on Tuesday night into Wednesday. So we'll see if we didn't get the snow, maybe we'll get the, the wind and we'll deal with it as we come.
I hope not.
All right, moving on to calendar events. District-wide, there'll be a half-day on January 10th and Noah's School for Martin Luther King Junior Day on January 15th. The next PTO meeting will be on February 7th at 7:00 p.m. in the Roselle McDonald CAF. At the middle, senior high school, there'll be an athletic boosters meeting on January 10th at 7:00 p.m. in the Learning Commons. Social media awareness night, sponsored by the PTO, will be at January 11th at 6:30 in the auditorium. The ski trip, ski club trip to Watu-Sit Mountain will be held on January 12th in the senior cabaret on January 19th at 5:00 o'clock in the auditorium. There'll also be a grade eight field trip to the Edward Kennedy Institute on January 23rd. And Midnight Madness, I believe that's for the middle schoolers, will be on January 26th from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And the Model U N conference will be held on February 3rd. At the Howard School, the social media awareness presentation sponsored by the PTO is on January 11th. Grade six report cards will be electronically distributed, distributed, excuse me, on January 26th. And the next school council meeting will be January 30th at 2:45 in the conference room. At the Roselle McDonald School, whale and dolphin conservation Plymouth presentation for grade one, sponsored by the PTO, will be held on January 11th. The Read for Life Pizza Party for grade two will be on January 12th, sponsored by the PTO. And the School Improvement Council meeting will be held January 22nd at 3:15 in the RLM conference room. And finally, at the Spring Street School, the next school council meeting will be January 17th at 3:00. Our next regular school committee meeting will be held on February 5th at 6:00 p.m. here in the middle, senior high school Learning Commons. Does anybody have anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, have a good night. Thank you.